Well, good evening, everyone. Welcome to our October 15th meeting of the Board of County Commissioners. We will begin our meeting as usual with the invocation led by Chairman, Vice Chairman, Richard Helms.
If you would care to bow with me and pray. Heavenly Father, we have many challenges today. Help us to handle those challenges with dignity and the leadership that you would have us perform. There are so, there's so much going on, we had, we've had so much natural disasters and deaths in our fa, in our community that we need your guidance, we need your comforting, we need your leadership. Thank you for the many blessings you stow upon us. Be with those that protect us, the firemen, the law enforcement, the EMS. Guide and protect them as well. Thank you for all the blessings, in thy name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
As is our practice, we like to recognize those employees who have created some tenure here in Union County, and so we'll do that at this time. We have a number of five-year service award recipients. Dawn Parker with Human Resources, Erica Martinez with Human Services, Christopher Learsef with Administrative Services, David Shaw with Administrative Services, Justin Stutz with Public Works, Elizabeth Williams with the Sheriff's Office, Ashley Rushing, Corey Burrows, Samuel Clark, Joshua Harlow, and Joseph Saylor with the Sheriff's Office, and Wendy Aldridge and Lisa Miller with Human Services. With 10 years of service, we have Diane Gilmore, Lori Keiker, and David Ludlow with the Sheriff's Office, and Sarah Franco and Robin Shepherd with Human Services. With 15 years' service in public work, Cynthia Fisher and Jonathan Smith with the Sheriff's Office, Chase Cobal, Jamie Grigg, and Brian Kazaya. Oh, John Brian Kazaya, that makes me feel so old. Catherine Edders and Susan Rafe in Human Services. With 20 years' service in community services, Kenzie Allen. So, we're excited for those folks and for their contributions and service to Union County. Our, yes, thank you. Thank you very much. Well deserved. Our next item is our public hearings and Human Services Division of Transportation, Urbanized Area Grant Application. Skoda.
Yes, Chairman and Commissioners, this is a grant application that we apply for on an annual basis to provide service to the urbanized area of Union County. And the eligible activities associated with this grant in the area of transportation are planning, engineering, design, and evaluation of transit projects, capital investment in bus and bus-related activities such as replacement, overhaul, and rebuilding of buses, as well as security equipment and construction and maintenance of passenger facilities. We are required by the state and the feds to conduct a public hearing as part of our grant application process, and that is the purpose of having it as a public hearing this evening.
Thank you, and we will do so. We will, at this time, open the public hearing. We have no one signed up to speak, so at this time, we will close the public hearing. And that will take us to item five, Non-Uurbanized Area.
Yes, it is the same type of grant application, but it is for the non-urbanized areas of Union County. It provides the same purpose as the grant we just discussed.
Again, we will open the public hearing. We have no one signed up to speak, and so we will close the public hearing. Takes us to our next item on the agenda, informal comments. And let me begin by reading our rules for public, informal comments. Each speaker must address the board from the lectern and begin their remarks by giving their name, stating whether they are residents of Union County, indicating the municipality within which they reside, if any, and stating the topic about which they intend to speak. Each speaker will have three minutes to make remarks. A speaker may not yield any of his or her time to another speaker. Speakers may not discuss matters which are the subject of public hearings, and they must be courteous in their language and presentation. Re-statements or repetitive comments by the same speaker, whether it's same or separate meetings, may be ruled out of order and terminated by the chair. Personal attacks will not be tolerated. We typically share that information, and I particularly wanted to share it this evening. We have four people signed up to speak. One listed the subject, three did not. I would, I know that we have quite a few folks in the audience this evening that probably are interested in our discussion of the Antioch Church Road issue. So, if you signed up to speak in informal comments for that purpose, I would suggest that you wait, and we will give opportunity for responses when we address that item on the agenda. So, I will call your name if that's what you want to speak on. You can just say, "I'll pass," and we'll go from there. The first to speak is Michael, it looks like Harry.
Harvey.
I'm sorry?
Harvey.
Harvey, excuse me.
That's okay.
On Sun Valley High School.
Yes, sir. Thank you very much. Good evening. My name is Michael Harvey. I currently am a citizen of Union County since 2001. I reside in the estates of Wesley Oaks in the Wesley Chapel. I'm here to speak tonight on the behalf of the parents, teachers, but mostly the students of Sun Valley High School with regards to the approval for the bids for new construction and renovations at our school to not only be placed on tonight's agenda, but also to be approved at tonight's meeting. I have worked for the Union County Pub, Public School System since 1998. I've worked at Benton Heights, Monroe Middle, Monroe High School, and now Sun Valley High School. At each of these schools, I've seen the benefits that students have from new construction. I've served as a teacher, assistant principal, and principal during my 21 years as an educator, and I currently serve as the principal at Sun Valley High School. I can share with you that our school system has a strong reputation of excellence in our performance. We are known throughout the state as a top achieving district in all aspects of school performance, including academics, athletics, the arts, and civic and community service. As the principal of Sun Valley High School, I want to share our vision statement with you, which is, "Don't be good, be great." Sun Valley High School has traditionally been a good school. It has a great supporting community full of parents who value education and business who want to partner with our school to enhance our community. As a parent, I can honestly say my wife and I have been and are still excited for our students to attend Sun Valley each day. Many of our friends feel the same way about their children attending this school as well. The school is full of students who are accepting of diversity, service-minded, academically committed, and engaged in their opportunities for success, their strong support of our school from our central office, and their educators and our Board of Education. Yet with all this positivity, there still exists, as one of our students on the Principal Advisory Committee put it, "School envy." Today, as I met with students on the Principal's Advisory Committee, I asked the question, "What does this project mean to you as a student of our school?" Unanimously, the number-one response was one of excitement and appreciation. The excitement of having a cafeteria which allows students to have a seat at the table, counselors with offices that have doors on them for private conversations, a college and career advisory area that is not shared space, excitement of an athletic facility that can serve as a sense of pride, traffic patterns that allow us to dismiss on time, and hallways that are less crowded. This project is rooted deeply in appreciation. For years, the community has felt that they have been overlooked as new schools with the likes of Weddington, Porter Ridge, and Cuthbertson have all been built on the borders of Sun Valley's attendance zone. Yet Sun Valley has managed its aging facilities with great care and understanding of the needs related to a rapidly growing school system and county. Having been part of the school construction at several schools during my career, I can tell you firsthand the impact these renovations and additions will have on our school and our community, and it will be a great one. In closing, let me share my own appreciation. You see, not only do I get the honor of being the principal at Sun Valley High School, but I have two of my own children that attend there each day. As a parent, I want my children to be in an environment that is, number one, safe, and number two, an opportunity for them to be successful. This construction and renovation project allows both of those things to happen. Sun Valley High School not only enhances their opportunity, but also every child's opportunity in our school. By voting yes tonight, you can be a part of our movement from good to great. For that, our school and our community thanks you.
Sir.
Thank you.
Wayne Griffin. Did you wish to speak on the Antioch Church Road?
Uh, yes, but can I wait till it comes up, or do I need to speak?
Uh, I would prefer you wait till it comes up, yes. That's, that was my intent. Uh, Nick Godwin. Same way?
Same.
And Jonathan Thomas.
Okay, y'all, sir.
Same way? Okay. Thank you very much. That concludes our informal comments, and will take us to the additions, deletions, and/or adoption of the agenda. I will add one item, that being the Sun Valley High School bond discussion, and I'll make that 28.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Can we move that up on the agenda? We had a facilities chair was nothing able to make it due to a family event she had to go to, and I think Chairman Melissa Merrill's here tonight to speak to the issue, but she also had a family conflict tonight that if we could get her out, she would appreciate it.
Okay. Mr. Rushmore, would you?
Just as soon as we can get her in, I don't think we even want to put it.
Well, we can put it to the first item on Old Business, which would be, we'll call it 15A. How's that? Not motion to approve the agenda as amended. Hold in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion to approve consent?
Aye.
Hold in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. That will take us to Old Business, item 15A.
Yes, Chairman and Commissioners, as you are aware, we received a request from the Board of Education to place this item on your agenda. The request is to adopt an associated budget amendment and capital ordinance to transfer and increase the project funding for Sun Valley High School bond projects by transferring an additional $5.849,905 to the project, bringing the total project cost of $34,419,925. The staff provided you with the background that we had as it related to this particular project, as from the time it was a bond project to where they are today. If you were to take this action this evening, the $6.5 million that you all set aside in the budget for bond projects that may overrun the original budget estimate, it will leave a remaining balance of $685,266.
Ms. Merrill, were we going to hear anything from the school, or any comments from the school?
You get to.
Harvey?
Other than approving our request to use our fund balance for, for these overages, which is what our discussion was many months ago, when we set this aside on batch, back in the budget cycle, we're just asking you tonight to use our fund balance. Most of the projects are already underway, if not nearing completion. Six of the, this would be six of the seven projects, so five of them are well underway. Mark Strickland is here to answer any scheduling questions you might have, but we are asking for your approval tonight so that we can award these bids that we received last week and get these, get this scheduled for Sun Valley so that we can try and have most of the construction complete by back to school next August, while the students are out of school next summer. We want to try and get as much finished as possible. Any delay, we would still have major construction going on when they come back to school. So, we would like to get it approved tonight and start awarding those bids.
So, Melissa, just so I'm clear, the request is for about $5.9 million?
That's correct. Five point eight, correct.
And I believe that in the budget process, we approved six?
Six point five. Six point five was in, was what we had in our fund balance.
And, and so, am I understanding that all of your other bond projects are within budget, and this is the only place you're going to need?
Well, after Sun Valley, we, I believe, we have the transportation facility, and is that out to bid currently?
Yes.
And we anticipate those bids.
In November.
So, the other ones are already taken care of, the other five projects, and so now we're at Sun Valley, and then the transportation facility. And if you approve our request tonight, we will still have $685,000 remaining in that fund balance.
So, Mr. Yates, we're within our bond appropriation?
The source of this funding would be PEGO. So, this is, if you remember back in, during the discussion, this was additional funding that you set aside out of the tax rate that the county uses to fund the schools. So, this is, the 5.8 million would come from the PEGO funding. So, this isn't bond money. This would be an addition too. So, your total bond program would be closer to $60 million versus the 53 million.
But that's what we decided to do with those funds, to hold it for this purpose.
Right. The point of that reserve was to cover, because remember at that time, the request was for the school board to use their fund balance for a number of items that were listed out at that time, and that you, in lieu of reducing their tax rate at that time, you would hold this money in the event that they needed it for bond overage. So, that's, that's the available funding that's there, and that's the, that's PEGO capital now. It's not bond funds.
A year ago, when, when Union County Public Schools had their audit, and our CFO, our new CFO and our new superintendent discovered this fund balance through the audit, we immediately set that aside because we had the hurricanes in Florida, Texas, Puerto Rico, and we knew that it was a very competitive, difficult construction market. And so, we anticipated that there were going to be, that some of the bids would come in over. So, instead of using the six and a half million for textbooks, or laptops, or other curriculum items, we set that aside and informed you of that fund balance with, with the plan always, that if there are any bond overages, we would use this money, and I think you agreed to that. And that's where we are today. We have bond, the bids, it's a very, very difficult market. If you have any questions, Mr. Strickland is here to answer that for you, but it's a, it is a very difficult construction market with very few subcontractors out there to do this type of work. We actually bid this out, this is our second time. We bid it out the first time, and it, we did not get a good response. And so, instead of moving forward with what did come in, we repackaged it and rebid it, and, and now we're coming to you saying that we got much better responses, and now we're ready to move forward and award these bids.
I think I, I'm sorry, no, no. I think I understood that you even reduced your scope some to help facilitate keeping it as marginal as possible.
Absolutely. For example, when we went through realignment last year, we had hired Dr. McKibben and Matt Cropper to, to assist us with a 10-year forecast, and he was able to help us see where we were having declined birth rates, we were graduating out more seniors than we were bringing in. And as far as Sun Valley was concerned, our original intent was to have a 4A stadium, and through that process, we determined when the, when the original bids were coming in too high, we scaled it back to a 3A stadium, which helps with concessions, seating, bathrooms. And so, we did scale this, so that's just one example. I believe we sent you a document where we cut back on HVAC, we cut back on interior finishes, parking lots, the stadium, and a baseball and softball field. So, there was a lot of things that we trimmed out of the original scope. We did not add anything to, to the original scope. We only scaled back to, to fit within our $54 million request and our fund balance.
Commissioner Agnes?
What, how many classrooms are being added in this project?
Four CTE classrooms.
Okay. And what was presented to the voters when we put this out as a bond?
I think it was six, let me see what I did wrong.
Six, or was it 10?
10, 10.
So, we went from 10 to four, from 10 classrooms to four classrooms. What's the student capacity going to be at Sun Valley?
Um, the cap, the capacity right now is at 1490, around 1,500 students.
And what will it be after this project's completed?
We will have approximately 1,500 students.
And what was presented to the taxpayers through the bond, that your capacity would be?
At that point in time, we had not entered into realignment, and we had not hired a demographer, and our previous administration, we thought it would go to 1700 to 1,800 students. And after that, we learned that, and we realigned. We moved some students back to Weddington, we moved some students back to Porter Ridge in that area, some students went back to Monroe, Piedmont, and so, we now have Sun Valley at approximately 1,500 students. And, and here, and if we did need to build 10 classrooms, we, we would not be within our budget. So, we're ver, we're actually very fortunate with this construction market that we don't need 10 classrooms. So, we're only building what we need.
So, I'm assuming then that the cafeteria will be smaller, or remain the same size versus expanding, which was presented to the taxpayers?
No, the cafeteria, the seating in the cafeteria, it, the kitchen and the cafeteria are going to be upgraded, and are going to be.
Upgraded or enlarged?
Enlarged.
Okay.
Mr. Rush?
Thank you. Does the legislation that came through, does it have any effect on high schools or just elementary?
Just elementaries. And, Mr. Agnes, I will tell you that the current cafeteria only holds about 1,200, or can only provide four different lunches for approximately 1,200 students, and they're current, they currently have 1,500 students. So, the cafeteria they have now absolutely has to be enlarged.
Thank you. I'd like to make the motion that we approve the BOE request and adopt the Budget Amendment Number Nine and the Capital Project Ordinance Number 217 to transfer and increase the project funding for Sun Valley High School bond project by transferring an additional $5,849,915 to the project, bringing the total project funding to $34,419,925.
Okay, we have a motion, further discussion.
You said the only remaining project was the transportation facility, is that right?
Correct.
And you won't have those bids until November?
We expect, expect those bids to come in.
What, how do you, how do you think that's going to come in?
Well, with, with the difficulties that we've had with the Sun Valley High project, we are expecting the bids to be tight.
Be tight, meaning that $686,000 remaining isn't going to cover it?
No, I'm saying that we expect the bids to be tight with the budget that we have.
Okay.
But as with all projects, we won't know until the end of the year.
And I will remind you that, that we did scale back the transportation facility, realizing that the original plan had too many bays, and so, we did scale that back to try and fit within the $54 million budget that we had. And we're, and we're willing, when those bids come in, I am confident that our Facilities Department will do whatever we need to do to stay within our budget.
Only question I have, I'm looking at page two of the package I was giving to you, and it lists the total is $30,849,915. I don't know where the 34 million came from.
It's our, what we have on the books is 34 million. It's our understanding that there were probably some monies expended prior to the issuance of the bonds as it related to this particular project. But that's what we have on our side of the ledger, what they've represented is the total cost of the renovation.
Okay. I, I agree with Commissioner Rushing that we should keep our commitment to you and transfer the $5,849,915 to your project.
Mr. Yates, I just have one more question for you. We, we heard that the bidding process was tight. Should we go over on the bus garage? Would that be additional PEGO capital that we need to find?
You are capped for the bond purposes at the total dollar value, which was approved by the voters. So, how you go about funding the difference then would either be PEGO or some other source. So, there's a number of ways to do that, and we get to sort of talk about it.
So, that would be our, coming out of our fund balance, correct?
Or some source.
Hey, Commissioner Simpson, if, if you don't mind me adding, the transportation facility is a much simpler construction than the renovation is at a 1960 Sun Valley High School. The renovation at Sun Valley High School is a huge undertaking, and building a transportation facility from the ground up is going to be a lot less difficult than dealing with an existing old structure.
And I appreciate your being here, and I appreciate your comments, and I appreciate your, your efforts during a tough construction market. Certainly understand that. My biggest concern, and my, hence my questions, is, is that how, when we end up being way over on our bond estimates and needs more money, that we start digging into our fund balance, and, and that really throws the kilter in things in setting tax rates down the road and working within the budget. So, I just wanted to be certain on, on that.
Well, trust me, we have the, the same concerns you do, and I'm confident that we have five other projects under our belt right now that we didn't come to you needing that fund balance.
Were there any savings on any of those projects?
No, we just, we met the budget.
I didn't assume there was.
We met the budget, but we didn't need the fund balance. We met the budget.
Gotcha.
Any further comments, questions, discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Takes us to item 16, Request for Letter of Support from CHS Union.
Yes, Commissioners, we have received a request from Mike Lutz for a letter of support for the CON application submitted to develop a new hospital known as Atrium Health Union West, and Mr. Lutz is here this evening to make a, sure, informal presentation, as well as answer any questions.
Is, is that his security guard he brought with him?
It is. The best I could find, so. Well, good evening. As Ms. Kodo mentioned, my name is Mike Lutz, I'm the president of CHS Union, and with me is Donnie Balkam, longtime hospital advisory council member. We are here to announce some very exciting news and ask for your endorsement with the letter of support of our project. I am excited to announce that earlier today, Atrium Health filed a certificate of need to build a second hospital in Union County. This house, hospital will bring high-quality, convenient access to care for residents of western Union County. The facility will be located. The facility will be located at the intersection of Highway 74 and Stallings Road in Stallings. The hospital will offer emergency inpatient and outpatient services. The hospital will start with 40 licensed beds relocated from CHS Union, as well as eight observation beds, as well as two ORs, and one GI suite also relocated from CHS Union. The facility will have all your basic imaging services, mobile MRI, CT, x-ray, ultrasound, nuclear medicine. Will also include 10 ED bays and all your basic ancillary services as well. We are excited about this project because it's an investment of over $125 million between the hospital and the medical office building in this community. And when the hospital is in its third year of operation with the medical office building, we expect the salaries, wages, and benefits from this project to be $25 million annually. We are excited to work with the town of Stallings to redevelop this area, and this location will be a gateway to Stallings. We chose to do this because we wanted to keep healthcare local and we wanted to keep patients in Union County. The fact is, many patients from Western Union migrate into Mecklenburg County, and our facilities at CMC Maine and Pineville are at capacity. And we want to keep those patients in Union County. It's also very exciting for CHS Union. Over the last six years, Atrium Health and Carolina's healthcare system has invested over $150 million into Union County, most of that investment being at our campus here in Monroe, as we have modernized facilities and grown services. We hope to continue to grow services at Union, particularly tertiary care services, which are higher level of services, which will allow these patients to stay in Union County and prevent people from having to go into Mecklenburg County. Some of the services, services that we look to expand at our campus here in Monroe include vascular surgery, cardiology, oncology, complex surgery, and we're evaluating even becoming a trauma center. We ask for your endorsement of this project and for your letter of support. And obviously, Donnie Balkum has been on the advisory board for many, many years and provides a perspective he'd like to share as well.
Well, Jerry, you know, when we get older, they either call you real old or historian. So now they, I'm a historian today. You know, most of you know that I served as commissioner on the board with Atrium, appointed by this board. Been on there going into my sixth year, heading into the seventh. I want to take you back some 12 years, where we were at and how we got to where we're at now. 12 years ago, you have to remember, we only had a management agreement with CHS. That was not a agreement as far as a financial partner that, like I say, came about six years ago. What we were trying to achieve is growth that we were looking at, and that's how I've come up to where I'm at now. One of our meetings 12 years ago, we were looking at what Mr. Lutz just referred to, is how to turn people from, people in the Western End County from taking their money, their dollars, and spending them in healthcare and other means in Mecklenburg and how to get them back in the county. At one time, I was chairman of the economic development board, and we were looking at the same thing at that time, you know, how, how do we get those dollars to stay in the county with people that have built their homes here, we're educating them, but they're turning to spend their money elsewhere. So anyway, we had a discussion one night, never really come to any conclusion after the meeting. So only you remember Clayton Laughlin, he was the liaison to us at that time. Clayton left earlier that night, we didn't get to finish what we were talking about. And somewhere or another, I ended up in John Roberts' office, which was the president of the hospital at the time, and with Hack Truman. Most of you do not know Hack. Hack had 15 hospitals under him from CHS, we were one of those hospitals. And he wanted to discuss things further. And we were just kicking a few things around and I asked Hack, I says, I don't know whether this is floating with the county or not, or with CHS, but what about a joint venture somewhere in the Indian Trail area along 74 to help keep, you know, some of that healthcare dollars in the, in the county? Hack thought that was tremendous, as well as John, and he, Hack asked me to, to call Clayton and see if he was on board. Same thing, Clayton thought it was just a wonderful idea because it would be a 50-50. They would pay half, we'd pay half. Everything could stay in the county, would, anything that we could not handle, naturally we got to Mecklenburg, CHS. So it was a, it was a good, good endeavor. But coming out of the board and our discussion, we needed to move the hospital, you know, to the Western End County, that was not feasible. At that time, a CON was not feasible for, for another facility because the state wouldn't approve it at the time. And, you know, we just didn't have the money to do those things. But once we established Union West, which I know all of you are familiar with, it was a good thing. And under now Mike Lutz's tenure, the last 10 or 11 years, it's really grown. But the problem was, in those days, we did not have the finances going back to, to be able to develop that as it should be. That's what we're addressing now. And CHS has been a good partner, I'm, I'm proud to, to serve on, on that board. I'll tell you, the first time that Gene Woods, our new president of Atrium, came to our facility, and we talked to him about Indian Trail, he got excited, he said, let's look for some land. Same thing with Ken Haynes, a UC OO, he was the same way. And these are people that, that want to move. They're, they're very positive, their thoughts. And they're looking to move some of the, the healthcare facilities out of Mecklenburg, so it's a good, good timing. And I'm excited about this. I hope you guys are as excited, some of the feedback I've, I've gotten from different ones have been positive. I want to thank you for your time, it's always good to see you guys, I appreciate everything you do, and all I can say is God bless.
Thank you.
If you have any questions for us, we'll try to answer. Mr. Lutz will try to answer.
Commissioner.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right.
Not, not really a question, just a statement. Thank y'all for the investments that you have put in Union County. Thank you, I was excited to hear about the services that will be available here, the new services that will be available at our hospital in Monroe, I went here in Union County to get people back from Mecklenburg here, just slap a couple classrooms in it, put a school logo on it, and you'll be good together. That works every time. So thank y'all very much for doing this and investing in this community.
Commissioner Agnes.
I'll make a motion, we issue the letter of support.
We have the motion and the discussion.
And offer as the chairman's aside.
As noted.
Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you so much. Texas to item 17, CZ 2018-005, Antioch Church Road.
Good evening, Chairman and members of the board. At your October 1st meeting, you held a public hearing for rezoning CZ 2018-005, that's on Antioch Church Road. It is a rezoning from R40 to CZR10. At that time, you received some comments from the adjacent neighborhood, adjacent property owners, some concerns were raised, and developer presented the project. Since that time, staff had received a list of potential conditions from the neighborhood and adjacent property owners. Now, I want to clarify that is our understanding that the neighborhood has not changed their opinion that they are still in opposition to this project. However, it's our understanding that they did sort of come to an understanding that if the project were to be approved, that if they had not offered any possible conditions, then they had missed the opportunity to discuss that. Those were received late last week, I believe, Tuesday or Wednesday. We've not had adequate time to really review those at the staff level, get legals input, and we feel that honestly, if those conditions are to be considered by the board, whether you support the approval or not, we think it's really prudent that we take time to meet with the HOA, I'm sorry, the neighborhood members, the developer, our legal staff, and work through those conditions to make sure that they are actually appropriate. Some of those conditions may not be legally enforceable by the county, some may not actually be, they may be too vague, we need to clarify some of the language, and then we need to understand whether the, whether the developer in the neighborhood even have any interest as far as those conditions go. So it would be my recommendation that the board consider actually delaying, taking action on this item, give us some time to work through those conditions. Other than that, I'm happy to present the case and talk about some of the specifics on it if you wish to move forward, but that would be our recommendation at this time.
Thank you. Mr. Agnes?
Yeah, it, my understanding that the development doesn't meet our current UDO.
That is correct, yes, sir.
So would we have, one, would we have to change our UDO to accommodate this?
Good question. So when you, if, if the board, if the board were to approve this request, as part of that, there comes an automatic update to the comprehensive plan. Essentially, you are amending your comprehensive plan to make it consistent at that point in time, because you are now changing the zoning on the property, and you're essentially changing the comprehensive plan at that point in time. So you're allowed to do that if the board chooses. You can, you can approve things that are inconsistent and then turn around and make them consistent. You can deny things that are consistent because you don't feel that they're appropriate at the time. So that would essentially change the comp plan.
Initially, you were not in favor because of the lack of consistency.
That is correct, yes, sir.
Okay. One other question, and I think, we, we discussed it this afternoon.
Yes, sir.
One of the big issues was that they were going to build $600,000 houses. Is there any legal requirement that we can hold them to, to build a $600,000 house instead of going smaller? Because my understanding, it's, it's not the amount, the cost of the house, but it's the square footage. Is that correct?
That is correct, that is correct, yes, sir. So we can certainly stipulate size of the dwellings, but we cannot stipulate the cost or the value of the dwelling.
Well, I know that there are people in the room this evening, there were people in the room earlier, that certainly have different expectations. There are people in the room that want the project approved, there are people in the room that certainly hope it does not get approved.
Yes, sir.
But I would say that everyone in the room has an expectation of good government. For me, this has been a really controversial project. There's been a lot of emails and a lot of talk. I certainly understand the home, the neighborhood's concerns, I also understand the desire of the developer to build a, a nice project. There was a lot on that list of conditional zoning issues. I don't know if they're legal or illegal, or if we can do it, or what we need to do to change our ordinance. We're going to make a decision, this board is. But I would suggest that we, we had a tutu tile on the planning board, we have a difference of opinion in the planning department, I would suggest we send it back, let everyone take a look at it, and bring it back to us at our last meeting in November, on the 19th. I would make that a motion.
Can I clarify?
Yes, sir, you can.
You mean send that back to the planning board as well?
I know there's been some discussion about that, you're certainly welcome to comment whether that's a good idea, bad idea, or indifferent.
Sure.
We appoint those folks.
Sure.
And we want their opinion. And I think if there's ever been a project that we would like to have an opinion on, this is one of them.
Absolutely.
So I think cross all our Ts, dot all our Is, make sure everybody's heard it, get staff's input, and then we'll go from there.
I just wanted to clarify that that's-
I understand.
Thank you, sir.
And that's my motion. Any discussion? Commissioner Rush?
Mr. Chairman. One of the items, I looked over that list that had been emailed to us. And there was a stormwater item, I think there was some more clarifications with stormwater, so just want to make sure that anything that they look at, that that be the issue, because that was one of the major concerns, I spent some time down there, that stormwater, maybe going by the stormwater standards of Weddington, doing something of that nature.
There was some discussion about that.
There was some discussion about that?
Yes, sir.
Okay, good, good. Just wanted to make sure of that. Thanks.
I, I just have one other con- Brian, you know I did a lot of work.
Yes, ma'am.
I now have the, all the FEMA maps. So I really do want, if we're going to send it back to the planning board, someone's got to show me, for me to vote, other than no, that you are not going to negatively affect downstream all the way to Weddington Road 84, not negatively affect one iota on that. That is my biggest, I do not want another WCWAA.
Okay.
This wasn't executed until December of 16, almost 12 years to rectify what happened with WCWAA. How could I vote to add something that would make this WCWAA all over again with the flooding?
Sure. And let me, again, some more clarification. Currently, under our guidelines, we do not require the flood study upfront. The flood study, if a flood study is required, is done usually after the project receives some rezoning approval from the board, and then that's when all the engineering and all of that goes into it. If the, if the board is asking for that to be information upfront, we'll need to know so that we can pass that along to the developer, because that is not our normal request on a rezoning. We, we don't require that information upfront. And I, and I don't, I'm not disagreeing, I'm just, I needed some clarification on that.
I believe strongly in that.
Sir.
I really do. I don't want to see, because I'll tell you right now, we get in trouble with FEMA again, we're going to have a bullseye on us, because it's the same creek, the same area, and they're going to wonder why we approved something that would lead to what happened before, that changed the flood zone.
Yes, ma'am.
That's just my opinion.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Agnes?
Yeah. I'm slow, I'm sorry.
That's all right.
I want you to- But what I heard you say a minute ago is that if we allow this modification to our UDO, UDO will be changed to where-
The comp plan, not the UDO. So the comprehensive land use plan now will, would show this to be in, it would be consistent, this particular piece of property.
Instead of, okay. But the UDO would still be in place-
Yes, sir.
-because I'm, I'm aware of much larger tracts that would like to go to similar zoning and doesn't necessarily fit.
It, it would be this particular property, it wouldn't necessarily be everything around it. Now, again, there was a question in the developer, he, he actually made this as one of his, his arguments for why it should be approved, and that is the, the potential for the sewer line that's coming down. I will say that had that been in place when the comprehensive plan was done, it may very well have reflected higher density in there. I can't say, because it wasn't in place when the comprehensive plan was done, it wasn't evaluated under that, that guidance. So it may very well change at some point in the future. The comprehensive plan could take that into consideration for multiple properties when it's updated. It may change, it may not change, it all depends on a lot of factors. But when you, the board, make a decision on a project, it is that project.
Just that project.
It is not the entire area, it is that project.
Commissioner Rush?
Roughly how much would a flood study for that area cost?
This is a rough guess, and I'm, I would say somewhere between 5 and 10,000, that would be my guess.
Well, since we're, now, when are we planning on the sewer line coming down and being completed there?
The timing for that, so they've started easement acquisition at this point in time. Construction is not due to start until 2020 and likely completion sometime in late 2021. That's the estimated time at this point.
Okay. So if we're looking at, if we're looking at issues like Commissioner Harrison was talking about, would it not be valuable for us to do a flood study because you've got this one and the next one and the next one? They're going to keep coming.
Sure. And, and so, I want to clarify what a flood study is. So a flood study is when you're actually putting something in the flood zone. It is not when properties drain to the flood zone. That is not a flood study. Flood study is when you're, you're putting something in the flood- Flood study is when you're, you're putting something in the floodway or in the flood zone. This bridge would be something that would potentially have an impact because it creates an impediment to the flood zone. Drainage into the flood zone is not considered a flood study. FEMA has already interpreted that there is development that will occur on vacant piece of properties, and that's already factored into their flooding diagram for that area. So if you required the flood study, it is simply going to reflect just the bridge. That's all it's really going to do.
So you're saying FEMA's already concluded that there's going to be development in that?
When they calculate the amount of drainage that runs through an area that creates their flood zone, they've already anticipated on all vacant properties that there is some development potential. Now, we don't have, whether that's two units per acre or 10, that's not provided to us, but there is a level of development they anticipate within that flood, flood zone. Now, they periodically redo those, those flow studies just to say, well, are we right? Are we wrong? Is development more than what we anticipated? But that's done infrequently. They don't do that about maybe every seven, eight years or so. But they've already anticipated some level of development on those properties.
Do they anticipate the clearing of the land for the sewer line to go through?
I couldn't, I couldn't tell you, sir. I don't know how they, how they do their analysis as far as the development goes.
Because we'll have a 50-foot, 50-foot construction easement, how many, so many feet, permanent easement, and then we'll have manholes every so often coming out of the creek.
So for, so for us, let's say a developer was actually proposing to do something in the floodway, and let's just say it was that project. We do require them to provide us with documentation as to what those manholes would do within that flood zone. Because generally, manholes in the sewer line are usually in a flood zone. That's usually where you put them, or just outside of it. So if they actually put manholes within the flood zone, we require them to show us what impact they will have on the flood zone because they can change that width or, or the flood. They can change that. Now, if it's outside the flood zone, then we don't require it because it's outside of it. But if it's in it, we do require them to supply us with that.
Because what I picture is the water moving faster, if the creeks, the edges of the creeks are cleared, the water moving faster, and what kind of impact that'll have on, on all places where it crosses roads. I don't know what that would be. Maybe we could talk about that whenever you're doing your research on the other stuff.
Start with the board's question.
Again, I just, my understanding, and it comes from me being on the planning board of Weddington.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, is by crossing the creek, this will cause a rise in the flood plain.
Yes, they can, yes, ma'am.
And the developers, then would have to revise the flood plain maps, and each lot along there will need a flood plan elevation certificates.
If there is any rise, it is my understanding that's what would be occurring. Yes, ma'am.
And that's my concern. How does that rise affect downstream?
Yes, ma'am. So.
It may not affect that development, but it's going to affect downstream. And I've seen it.
We would, we would want that information as well, as far as the flood study. Yes, ma'am. But I didn't want, I didn't want the board to misunderstand what a flood study includes. It is really just the impediment to the flood zone. Now, if they span the flood zone and they put nothing in it, then that may have no impact whatsoever. It's all depends.
Anything further? Commissioner Hales?
Yeah, I, one of the things difficult about being a commissioner or politician is sometimes you have to disagree with your friends. And I, I see friends on both sides of the aisle out here, and, but I had made several observations, and I came out to look at Mr. Griffin's property during the high water. And I think it was two and a quarter inches had fell so far during that time, and it was right up to the road. I've seen it much higher. That concerns me greatly, along with what Ms. Harrison's saying, and also observe road traffic, which I think is considered. With the FEMA concerns, I don't see where delaying a vote is going to buy us anything. And actually, another thing that concerns me highly, and I've spoken to a couple of the developers about, the Plan B was a disaster. And, you know, I've got the Union Weekly article about Plan B, and it talks about intimidating this board. I know in conversation, it wasn't meant that way, and I believe you, but it sure came out that way. And that's, that's a major problem. So I'm not in favor of delaying the vote. I think a lot of things about it just doesn't fit this particular situation.
Sorry, go ahead.
And I know that Mr. Eastep has coordinated some very nice neighborhoods in Weddington, and I recognize that, but we'll have to respectfully disagree that maybe this is not the one that, that will add to your bragging rights. So, but.
Well, I will say, speak only for myself, but I'm not intimidated at all, gentlemen. What I'm after is the fact that these people have said that there's a potential for this to be approved. We don't want it approved, but there's a potential for it to be approved. And if it is approved, we'd certainly like to have some input as to how it's approved. And that is my intent in the motion, is to make sure that all that information is vetted, and we've all had an opportunity as a community to come together instead of just drawing a line at the same. And that's my intent.
Commissioner Rush?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I also went out on Saturday afternoon, and, or was it one day, Saturday or Sunday? Been out a couple of times, and watched as rain. Wayne invited me to come out and see where, how high the water was. When I got there, it was high. It was to the road, it wasn't over the road, but spent about two hours, went down on the land that we're talking about. I went by and saw Mr. Joyner, I hope you got your flooding fixed. I was worried about his flooding issue. I thought, I thought the creek was getting down, but he, but he got his thing with the washing machine right. When I left, two hours later, I was there about 2:00 to 4:00, the creek had already receded to back to the banks, and it was pretty quick. It's kind of amazed me how quick it was. We've got a bigger issue here if, if we can't approve developments along that line with some kind of standards, it was some kind of, even, even going the extra mile. We may have to do this, you know, this is the first of many that are come, going to come before us. We've got that sewer line going in. It's been voted on year after year. It's been pledged for many years. And along with that sewer line, the only way you pay for it is to have high-density neighborhoods built, whether they're on R40 and just clustered all together, or whether they're, you make, utilize the best use of the land and utilize more of it for wildlife and that kind of stuff. But that sewer line itself is going to create a several-mile-long trail, open, you know, basically a path for anything to come down. And I do wonder how that will affect the volume of water and the speed which water will reach those roads. And, and maybe that we should look at, again, somehow look at what kind of impact that may have. That may be something our public works department may need to do. But if we can find ways, and I spoke to Kevin, we, we served on the board together many years ago. We talked about using gray water and using different types of irrigation things, and we talked about the ponds, the holding ponds being used for irrigation, and some pretty creative ideas about making that not be an impact on the creek. But we do need to look at the impact on the creek. Of all the concerns I have, because the neighborhood going in down the road, I saw the lots, it looked like half-acre lots, maybe, there were big houses on half-acre lots. As far as being in conjunction with the area, I didn't see that being as big of an issue as I did the flooding. And, and we may be, as a county, as responsible for more flooding about to happen in that area than anybody developing property. You can see that happening, right?
It could be, sir.
So, so, you know, again, I'd hate that they did something and went the extra mile and just to find out that what we did changed everything, and the next big storm that comes through what we did actually caused the problem more than what any builder or developer might do. So I would appreciate some more information on that. I agree with Chairman Simpson, we need, we do need some more time to evaluate this and the impacts, because again, if we start telling people, know everybody that comes when this line is in, we're going to have a lot of sewer line to pay for somehow.
Anything further?
I'm, I'm not sure what to say because I know in Weddington, we have the developers pay for every sewer line and every water line, and we have one-acre lots, or the equivalent of one-acre lots. And I want to have something, so I take my Weddington hat off and I put my Union County hat on, and you have to look at the comprehensive plan, and it doesn't need it. And on top of that, I've got 18 other issues, all dealing with the roads and the fact that we didn't, we didn't get a TIA because it wasn't required, but you're asking. I have, in my development, I have a family with four children that won't move out. They got six cars, six cars that come in and out. And if the house is going to be the same, you're going to have the same issue. And I'm worried about a lot of that in that development, along with the fact that if the road is blocked, the school bus cannot leave out the children just anywhere, and the school driver cannot get out of the bus. And that causes issues, and I've seen those. I'm against delaying the vote tonight.
Anything else? Motion on the floor? Send it back, bring it back on the 19th. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All of those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Thank you. Takes us to 18 Employee Climate Survey Action Plan.
Yes, thank you, Chairman. Union County conducted an employee climate survey from June 1st to June 20th. Do you want me to wait?
Just clarification, since we did not address the issue and we sent it back, the developer didn't comment, and so we're not taking any comment from the group. So you're, you're free to leave.
But thank you for coming.
Absolutely.
Thank you, ma'am.
Would you like for me to proceed?
Give him another minute.
Okay.
Looks like folks trying to get in the state fair. Okay, I think we can start.
Okay, thank you. Union County conducted an employee climate survey from June 1st to June 22nd. The results of that survey were presented to the board on August 6 by Dr. Dawn Chanlon. On September 20th, I provided an outline to the board of next steps. Following the presentation to the board, our leadership team received a presentation of the results from Dr. Chanlon, and each of our service areas received an overview from Alan Jackson. I want to publicly thank our leadership team for being engaged and enthusiastic about the path on which they are embarking. When we announced the 2018 employee survey, we knew that there would be concerns, that there would be no tangible results, and therefore participating in the survey would not change anything. The approach that we have identified to address the employee survey results reflect on the eight management factors that foster trust, as identified by Dr. Paul Zach. Dr. Zach is a professor at Claremont Graduate University and has written extensively on the benefits of trust in high-performing organizations. Some may question the timing of this initiative and the value of doing this work while I have just a few months left as county manager. I have thought about this quite a bit, and I believe that the work staff will be doing is of utmost importance. The organization, our employees, and our communities would not benefit from an idle county administration simply waiting for a new manager to come on board and learn the Union County way. With that in mind, I felt it important that we continue to move the ball forward during this transition period. The work that has started and will transcend any changes at the top of the organization, and I am certain the next county manager will be grateful for your support of these efforts. Our efforts to create an environment built upon trust will help county leadership address the areas of opportunity as defined by the analysis of the employee climate survey. Many of our staff have said we are already a high-performing organization, and in many ways, I agree. Specifically, when you look at the survey item, the work I do is important. The positive results for either strongly agree or agree were 97% organization-wide. This is our purpose and something we should be very proud of. One of the key elements of Dr. Zach's work is trust times purpose equals joy, and we are striving for joy. As an organization, we have a strong sense of purpose, and it is much higher than most other organizations. We should celebrate and reinforce that sense of purpose and be proud of the organization that you represent. However, we also know from the survey data that there is room for improvement, more specifically in the area of trust. The concern being a lack of trust between employee and supervisor, employees and managers, and finally, employees and organizational leadership. We know from Dr. Zach's teaching that achieving, achieving high levels of trust is paramount in every aspect of our organization. Dr. Zach points out that building culture of trust is what makes a meaningful difference. Employee in high-trust organizations are more productive, have more energy at work, collaborate better with colleagues, and stay with their employers longer than employees working in low-trust organizations. They also suffer less chronic stress and are happier with their lives, and these factors fuel strong performance. To begin our work in this area, our leadership team members read Dr. Zach's book, Trust Factor, and participated in a day-long retreat on October 2nd. Our human resources staff identified a well-qualified professor from UNC Charlotte, Dr. Jamie Bochantine, to spend time with our team focused on trends in the workplace and building trust. Dr. Bochantine teaches classes at the undergraduate and graduate level on topics including organizational communication, culture and communication, leadership communication, research methods, and the dark side of organizational communication. Her research examines the social issues, member behavior, and cultural landscape of organizations to provide managers and HR practitioners with strategies for the implementation of policies, practices, and procedures to better the organization and the relationship between employees and managers. She provided the group with great information on insight in today's workplace. An outline of the information presented and the work that was done was included within your agenda package. However, we also have a brief video that captures some of the day's activities that we would like to share with you now. And hopefully Chris got the clue.
For a really long time, this idea of the emotional connection that we have to work and working for our purpose and bringing our best selves, all of that is really important, but things are changing in our world of work. Engagement alone used to be enough, but unfortunately, engagement alone nowadays is not enough. We need to have what I refer to as a sustainable model of employee engagement.
The results of the employee survey were very enlightening for me, and I think for this group, and we're really taking that as our foundational piece and to build upon it as to how can we address the needs that we heard from our employees? How can we take this organization from already a high-performing organization to even one that is more high-performing than it is presently? And the group here today was absolutely engaged, had some wonderful ideas, and I truly was impressed and really look forward to what the future holds for Union County.
I think this was, this was a great opportunity for the directors, the leadership of the organization. I think this was, this was a great opportunity for the directors, the leadership of the organization, to take an in-depth look at the survey results, to, to understand kind of the underlying issues that we face. It was also an opportunity for us to address some of those issues and understand that trust is paramount to the success of the organization and something that we need to work on.
My biggest takeaway is that trust is in every aspect of leadership. And in order to be successful, we really have to spend the time as directors, managers, supervisors, building trust with our employees.
I think that we're given the opportunity to, to have some change. Good discussion on things that we can do to make our workplace better and to show the folks we work with that we genuinely care and genuinely appreciate them.
One of the objectives for today, because there were, there are a lot of items in the survey itself that individually, if we tackled each one of those concerns individually, it becomes an insurmountable task. So really condensing a number of those issues down into a common theme and then providing the direction, providing the opportunity for learning about trust, the impacts of trust, how to take that back into the workplace and implement it, I think is, is critical. One of the things we talked about early on today was that it's easy to become overwhelmed. And so this day was all about boiling down those issues into manageable items that we can take back and have larger impacts in the workplace.
Change is around the corner. It's a change in culture, it's a change in environment, it's a change in how we look at doing everyday business to make it good for us, make it good for our employees, make it good for everybody involved in the delivery of services to the folks in Union County.
As you can see from the video, staff was focused and working hard on the continued shaping of Union County government into a high-performing organization that our residents deserve. The work we have done over the past several years has raised the standard within our organization, and we are continuing to make advancements in our operations and our overall culture. On October twenty-sixth, we will have a second event with division directors, executive directors, and county management participating in a day of team-building activities that builds upon the work of October second. There will be a third event scheduled in early twenty nineteen. The Board of County Commissioners will be included in future discussions to get input on our strategy and gather feedback. You play an essential role in more deeply rooting trust and high performance into our culture. For Union County government to build upon our past achievements, we must continue to look forward and embrace challenging management efforts. I am excited for the future of this organization, but I'm also sad that I will not be here to see the amazing work and innovative ideas that come forward. This is a huge opportunity for you as leaders to help shape the future of our organization, and I hope you will embrace the challenge. That is an overview of what staff has been doing, and we did provide you, as I stated earlier, with some additional information in your agenda package. So if the board has any other questions, I am happy to answer them at this point in time.
Questions, comments? Just go to appreciate your comments and your investment in the process, along with all those folks who participated in the video. I looked real good on there, Mark.
It takes a village.
Yeah, we thank you for that investment in your time. Okay, that takes us to item nineteen, Yadkin Water Supply Project Acquisition Policy Modification.
Yes, Commissioners, as you are aware, within the inter-local agreement that you have with the town of Norwood, there was a easement acquisition exhibit that identified how easements were to be obtained as part of this process. Staff has evaluated that, and we are bringing back some suggested changes to that exhibit. And we thought while we were before you this evening, that it would also make sense to provide you an update as to where we are on the Yadkin project. So I'd like to turn it over to, oh, my stars. This is so embarrassing. To our interim director, Aubrey Lofton. Sorry about that, Aubrey.
Thank you. Good evening, Commissioners. So today, like Ms. Coto mentioned, I'm gonna be doing a brief update, kind of background relevant to the easement acquisition process, as well as the status of where the project is at. I will also be looking at the schedule and, and then get into the nuts and bolts of, you know, the easement acquisition and why we're here tonight. And finally, wrap it up with the recommendations for requested board actions this evening. So this project, the Yadkin Regional Water Supply Project, is really the culmination of a ten-year effort to develop a water supply from the, I'm sorry, from the Yadkin River. And that map on the right is really to focus on the fact that we required a partner for this project. It's not something that we were able to carry out alone. And this, this water supply is really a critical component of the county's long-term water supply needs.
I got nothing.
I'm having issues?
Sorry.
No, it's okay.
I got it, black screen.
You got it.
Thanks, Chris.
Sorry.
No, no worries. So this water, like I was saying, is a critical component of the county's long-term water supply needs. And one important note is that seventy-five percent of the county lies in the major Yadkin River basin. But right now, eighty-five percent of the water for the county comes from the Catawba River. So this water supply really provides us a better balance of supply from the basin where the customers are being served. There is an error on this slide, but this secures us water supply through twenty fifty, not twenty forty. Just wanted to make that point. And again, a really critical component of this whole project is the agreement with the town of Norwood. This enabled the project to move forward. And again, that is the inter-local intake and transmission agreement that was signed back in twenty thirteen. So there's been a lot of recent activity going on with this project. Again, we would like to update you on just all this activity that's going on now. So we've recently awarded the design build contract, so we're able to move forward with the design process. We have ongoing public outreach efforts. We've got more recent website updates. We're creating a video newsletter for the first time. We've got some public meetings coming up. The environmental surveys have, have begun along the alignment. So people start noticing people along the roadways starting to do investigations. We've also begun water quality testing in Lake Tillery. This is really critical to make sure that the design of the water treatment plan is appropriate and so we can provide safe drinking water for our residents. One big notable thing that you all are aware of, but is the settlements with Stanley County, Montgomery County, and parties, and the Riverkeeper, which have allowed us to keep this project on schedule. It was a major milestone recently accomplished. And finally, I'm gonna get into a little bit more detail about the lake use permit and, and how the, the settlements actually factor into that. So the lake use permit is, it's a permit given by the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission. We submit it to Duke for initial review and eventually gets passed on to FERC. But FERC was not going to be taking any action on this permit until after all of the litigation was resolved with local governments. So the fact that that settlement, the settlements are completed, there's no more outstanding litigation on the project means that we can now move forward with the lake use permit, which is a really critical part of our schedule. As you'll see, so we've been able to submit this application to Duke, which is now in agency review. And then we'll be getting those comments back and incorporating any comments that we received so that we were able to have Duke submit that on our behalf to FERC in early next year. And then you'll note that there's a giant span listed as six to eighteen months for that review period from FERC. And unfortunately, we really have been given no indication that this won't, won't be approved. We've never heard of a lake use permit being denied. So it's a fairly low risk, and it's from our perspective. However, we are not in control of the timeline in this, this process. So while we're almost certainly expecting it, we really don't know when. So I'd just like to walk you through a little bit, I'm sure you remember seeing this, this schedule, and we updated it, including when we've wrapped up the settlement process near the top. And again, that's, it's really enabled us to move forward with this lake use permit to FERC. So we're still on schedule up there. And as you follow down, you can also see that we've moved ahead after awarding the design build contracts, that we've now be able to start the design permitting process. But some key, key things to note is that we've got acquiring easements beginning in early twenty nineteen. So we're not waiting until we get to the guaranteed maximum price. We need to begin acquiring easements again early next year, whereas we're not expecting that guaranteed maximum price until later next year. That's the next major milestone for the board, is the guaranteed maximum price, when we would find out what this project's gonna cost and if we want to take any of the off-ramps included in the design build process. And again, the easement acquisition is, is really critical to secure ahead of the construction and has to be expedited as, as much as we can, because as you can see, we're allowing less than two years for that process. But it'll actually be quite time-consuming and complicated. So I'd like to also show you a delayed project schedule. The, the delay here shown is for a potential, let's say, worst-case or long-term review period from FERC. So it's showing the eighteen months instead of six months. And what you can see that does to the schedule is it, it really forces some critical decisions about when we would move forward with construction and what the board would feel comfortable with doing or not. So hopefully, this is not where we end up going, but I just wanted to put it in front of y'all so that you would see a potential outcome. So, and this is a overview of infrastructure requirements for the project. In total, approximately forty miles of pipeline, which means we're crossing four hundred fifty properties, approximately. So this is an unusual scope of project for this county. We haven't really taken anything on like this before, and the amount of easements required is substantial. So because easements is so important to the schedule, we wanted to make sure we really took a close look at this and determined if there was a way that we could keep this process moving in a timely manner. So the current intake, I'm sorry, inter-local intake and transition, transmission agreement with the town of Norwood has an Exhibit C, which is defining the easement acquisition policy for this project. And this, this Exhibit C reflects the county's current easement acquisition policy. It includes two mailed notices, use of tax value determined valuation. Again, the, the appraisals is only for fee simple interest, not for easement acquisition. Meeting with the property owner, mailing them a notice of offer, courtesy call, two-week follow-up, and then there's no momentum, we're, we're moving to condemnation. That's the current process. So our goals that we're looking for, for this Yadkin Regional Water Supply Project is we'd like to increase the public outreach included in this project. We'd also, we're looking at the timeline. The timeline is really important. So if there's things that we can do to keep it moving, we would like to try to do those. And one thing we would want to do also, is utilize the current market valuation for easements rather than the tax value. In Union County, the tax value is now three years old, and we're starting to diverge from market value. And really, the ultimate goal is we want to reduce the number of condemnations. So the three main changes that we'd like to make to this Exhibit C in the agreement with Norwood is to have a public meeting to discuss easements in the affected communities. Just to emphasize, this isn't a single meeting, this is in multiple locations, and realistically, we'll have several waves. We've already had a preliminary meeting last fall. We have an upcoming series of meetings next week. So we're really trying to get in front of homeowners, property owners in the area, make sure people are educated ahead of this process. Item number two is to use a appraisal system rather than a tax value-based to determine the value of the easement. So we'd prefer using a specialty firm who, who would specialize in, again, this large number of easements. It's probably not a size that just any firm can handle. So we've identified a firm that I H D R will contract with. Hopefully, I'm not sure that that's taken place yet. And then the third item is that we would save some negotiating authority for legal counsel. So there is some room to negotiate, and again, it would hopefully minimize the number that are moving to condemnations, but keep some control over that process as well. So finally, the two board actions that we're requesting this evening is to approve the replacement of Exhibit C of the inter-local intake and transmission agreement between the town of Norwood and Union County as we've revised, as included in your packet. And then number two is to adopt the policies and procedures outlined in revised Exhibit C for property acquisition in Union County for this project specifically. If you have any questions, I'd love to answer them.
Mr. Igness?
Yep, I'll make a motion that we approve the replacement of Exhibit C, inter-local intake and transmission agreement between Norwood and Union County, and adopt the policies and procedures outlined in revised Exhibit C for property acquisition in Union County for the Yadkin draw water plan.
We have a motion, discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like saying? Takes us.
Aubrey's name will forever be etched in my brain.
Thank you.
Sorry.
Takes us to item twenty, the fire funding study.
Yes.
Okay, let, let me pause just a minute here.
Certainly.
Okay. Maybe we ought to take a recess to twenty-five till, how's that? Give everyone a chance to break, sorry. Twenty-five till. Got seven minutes, eight minutes.
Well, I would like to agree with you, but I-
I think we're probably close enough, Michael, so.
As the board will recall, you've had a number of sessions as it relates to fire funding. I believe this may be our fourth?
Fourth or fifth, yes ma'am.
Yes. And at the last meeting we held on this subject, you asked that staff go out and meet with our municipalities and our fire chiefs, and bring back the results of those comments, as well as to provide additional information as it related to the Brunswick model, and completing it for all of the volunteer fire districts that we have within Union County. And with that, I will turn it over to Mr. James.
Thank you, Ms. Cota. Good evening, Chairman and Commissioners, appreciate the time to come back and talk about fire funding again with the board, and hopefully answer any questions, and get some direction on how we want to move forward with this project. As the board is more than familiar with, the general scope of this project was to have our consultant come in and do a comprehensive evaluation of our funding structure as it's currently structured, and to come up with some alternatives, models, and some cost-effective funding strategies for the candidate used going into the future, with the idea of making sure that we focus on equity and the cost burden among our residents, and that we have a sustainable and long-term funding strategy for the board to utilize for fire services in the county. So today, as the manager mentioned, we're going to talk about the, some feedback we got from the municipalities, our community forum that we held the week before last. It had a real good turnout here at the Government Center, so I appreciate those folks taking time to join us. Also, we had some additional feedback from the fire chiefs. We had talked before about some of the feedback that they had, kind of anecdotally through our conversations, but I wanted to provide the board with some written feedback from the chiefs on exactly how they feel about the funding models, and why they chose what they have chosen as their preference. We'll also talk briefly about the sales tax recalculation that we did, that did impact our estimates on the tax rates, and the changes associated with that. And then we'll go into the Brunswick model analysis. As the manager mentioned, we were asked to apply the Brunswick model to every fee district in the county. So we've done that, and that has been completed, and so you'll be able to see that today. And then we'll wrap up with just some general feedback, as far as long-term goals, and that we've heard from some of the chiefs and some of the municipal representatives as well, and then ask for some commission direction to end the discussion. So looking at our fire funding forum, we had a very good meeting, like I said, here at the Government Center. A lot of town showed up, we had mayors, managers, council members there. And so what we did, we went over what the objective of the fire funding study was, to give them an idea of what the board was looking to achieve, what staff was trying to do with our consultant Stan Tech. We also went through, just to give them a good understanding of how our funding is currently structured. So we talked about, you know, what makes up the fire department budgets, where that money comes from, what the revenue streams are, to give them an idea of how we're currently structured, since they don't always deal with fire funding a lot on a, on a daily basis or regular basis. And then we walked through each of the proposed options that are before the board. And we closed at the end of that, just asking them to give us feedback, give us input. So we kind of turned the floor over to them, and had some good discussion about what they thought about the options, and how we're currently funding fire. So this is just some general feedback that we heard. I know some of the mayors and some of the managers are still talking to their councils and getting some additional feedback, but so far, what we heard about, there was questions about the sales tax revenue, and will that impact municipalities, how will that impact districts? And we'll go into that in this presentation, but that was a question that was raised. We did have questions asked about the Brunswick model and the fee system, as far as do other localities use a fee model? If they don't, why not? There were some questions about that. Generally, a lot of the municipalities that are in fire tax districts, they like the model that they have, they want to see something proposed that is similar in nature to the self-funding tax districts that they work within now. There was also some general questions about the operational aspect of our volunteer fire departments, and I think Chairman Simpson had a comment that was very good for the group to hear, is that we're focused on the financial analysis of fire funding. We have a contractual relationship with the fire departments, they're independent entities. We're looking at how can we fund fire services within how we're currently structured, and what methods is best suited for us long-term. Also, we had some, some feedback about what would happen if a municipality decided not to be part of a fire tax district, what that would look like. But overall, some of the feedback we got was that they wanted to see something that was flexible, that we could accommodate future growth, and that some of the districts had mentioned that they did not want to be penalized for growth in other fire tax districts, based on some density and some decisions that they were making locally, that they wouldn't be penalized within their own district. So again, I think they're still having conversations, and we, as staff, the board wishes we would still have conversations with those councils, and with those municipal staff, to get some more feedback with this, with some of the information that we got so far. So we also, I wanted to ask the fire chiefs, just two simple questions to provide that to the board, is which of the methods that you've seen so far makes the most sense for you as a fire chief, looking at your fire district? And also, why is that option make the most sense? Again, we have talked with the fire chiefs two or three times, and shared with the board what their preference was, but we wanted to be able, in their words, for them to be able to share with the commission why they think a particular option is best suited for them. So here's a breakdown of what the responses were from the fire chiefs. And as you can see, most of them were either a self-funding district, a fire tax district with a county subsidy, or as was shown with Beaver Lane and Winget, some kind of other subsidy, not percentage-based, but a single allotment. And our final two, Fairview and Griffith Road, saying that they prefer a county-wide fire tax. So looking briefly at the self-funding fire tax responses, we had six districts that thought that was the best option for them locally, and some of the responses around that was that they thought it provided a level of accountability and ownership over the district fire department costs, and then the people that they serve, that the method is used widely across the state in most counties, and that the revenue will stay within the district itself. And just wanted to note also, that three of the respondents who chose self-funding fire tax district also noted that it may be in the best interest of the county to have some percentage subsidy, or an allocation subsidy, to the fire departments, just to help out with some of our rural districts, who may need a little bit of help with that higher tax rate that could experience being self-funded, that a county-wide tax could help subsidize some of that, and maybe in better interest of the county as a whole. So looking at the 80% district tax, 20% county-wide, Waxahaw, Lanes Creek, Sandy Ridge, and Stack Road chose that as the option they'd prefer. And some of their general comments was that it kind of, it worked well because of their reliance on mutual aid, that they would like to see a self-funding district, but due to the rural nature of some of these districts, that may not be the most cost-effective thing to do at this point in time. And also, they noted that with the 20% model, that percentage may need to be increased due to the rural nature of some of those districts. And here's the hybrid model, again, this is essentially a self-funding tax district plus a subsidy. Instead of percentage, this would be a basic allotment. I think several years ago, the chiefs had, had worked, maybe with the fire commission, had come up with a recommendation that what they wanted was a basic allocation that would serve or cover the basic level of service in each district. So Beaver Lane and Winget chose that as their recommendation, or their preference, as opposed to a percentage of their operating budget to be used, and then the local district tax on top of that would subsidize or meet whatever they needed above the county allocation. And lastly, the county-wide fire tax, Fairview and Griffith Road noted that that would be less taxes for most of the citizens in the county to share that rate. So overall, some of the fire chief feedback, 13 of 15 chiefs all wanted some version of a district fire tax model, was their overall preference, either self-funding or with a subsidy. There was no respondent who put any preference towards a fire fee district maintaining that system, or creating a sixth fire tax district. So I wanted to note with the board, and we sent some more information earlier, when the, when finance had provided us with a per penny sales tax number, and we provided that to the consultant, I didn't catch, nor did the consultant catch, that that was a per penny tax revenue, instead of it being multiplied by the district tax itself. So we fixed that calculation, and finance helped to clean that up a little bit, so our original sales tax allocation estimates for the districts were lower than what they actually will be. So we've made those corrections now, and you'll see throughout the rest of the presentation how that impacts the overall tax rate, because with an increase in the sales tax revenue, the local district rate and the county-wide rate has a, has less of a revenue need that has to come out of that, since they have a larger sales tax chunk coming to them. So this just shows you what the sales tax allocation would be for self-funding, and then some of our subsidy scenarios, all the way to a 50-50 model. So overall, again, some of the questions that a municipality had asked during our community forum was, would the sales and use tax change or be affected by the creation of new tax districts? And so the municipalities would not be impacted by that. The share that goes to the fire service districts comes from the county's allotment of sales tax, nothing to do with the municipalities. So we, as county government, would see a little bit less in sales tax revenue if we come, go with a fire tax district model, and current fire tax districts probably would see an increase in their sales tax revenue compared to what they see currently now. So again, we did a reassessment of that, to make sure we had the right information in place in this assessment, and you'll see the associated tax rate changes. So looking at the Brunswick model analysis, as staff was asked to do, we went ahead and applied the Brunswick model to all of our fire fee districts. And in doing that, tax did a deeper analysis of all the parcels in each of our fee districts, and we did find some situations where properties were combined into one, that should have been two or three properties, that should have had the appropriate fee to that. So we addressed that issue as well, so you'll see a little bit of difference in some of the initial analysis that we had into this analysis that we're presenting here today. So just as a reminder, this is the House Bill 445, and the shall-not-exceed-fee amounts associated with property classes, and the unapproved land acreage amounts. So we wanted to show the board, looking at the Brunswick model and the max fee rates themselves, we thought it'd be easy to show what percentage of the max rate each of these fee districts would need using the Brunswick model. So as you will recall, Lanes Creek and Bakers was what we thought would be our best-case and worst-case scenario, and that did turn out to be true. But Lanes Creek does actually fund under the Brunswick model. It's got about 8%, capacity under the Brunswick rate maxes. And Bakers has 39% capacity, and all the districts fall within those two, as being a percentage of the total max that they would need to meet their revenue requirements. So here is the residential fire fees per district, based on the square footage of residential. Of course, the board has seen this chart before, but the numbers have been adjusted. And here is the commercial, based on square footage, and the unapproved acreage chart as well, again, based on anything over five acres and the associated property classes. And so we just wanted to add a note to the board, just to provide some additional context. So looking back, since 2010, you'll be able to see how much the budgets have increased in our fire fee districts. And so if the board wishes to go towards a fee model, something similar to Brunswick, we would need to make sure that we build in enough capacity, long-term, to where we're not having to go back to the General Assembly in five, 10 years, needing more revenue, that just to be aware of the historical growth that has happened in these districts. And of course, some years, there's outliers of capital expenses, or things like that that may have shown up, that was a bigger bump than usual, but you can see kind of the revenue or the budget growth over the past nine fiscal years. So here is the self-funding tax district rates. Again, you've seen this chart before, but with the new, with the new analysis of the sales tax, going into the analysis, or going into the math here, the self-funding districts' new rates have changed from what you saw previously. Attributes remain the same as what makes it what it is, but these are the new self-funding district tax rates. And we also wanted to show the board as well, looking at our fee districts, where the cap is currently $100, what the home, based on the home value, what they would pay under those self-funding tax rates for those fee districts, just to show the board, at what point are they over $100, at what point will residency change in the cost of fire funding in their district? So here's our self-funding with 20% subsidy, with the district tax and county-wide tax, again, taking into account the larger sales tax revenue for the districts. Here's our sixth fire district tax rate, and our, again, our county-wide fire service tax rate. So overall, and a lot of the conversations that we've had with, with some of the municipal staff, and of their thinking about, you know, going into or doing their own thing outside the county's fire service system, that does require a lot of maneuvering on their part in the counties, as far as contract revisions with the volunteer fire departments. Any donut holes that may exist because a municipality takes over fire service with a contract on their own, a lot of counties deal with that, and they'll contract with a municipality, and contract with the VFD to cover that section of unincorporated county. And overall, depending on how active- And overall, depending on how active the municipalities get in fire services, it would increase our costs and our level of responsibility for fire protection services, most likely, if that starts to happen. But I think in a lot of ways, the conversation we're having with municipalities, with the fire departments, it really is a partnership to think long-term about what type of fire protection services are going to be provided in Union County in the future. And to think about that long-range planning and prepare ourselves, and the municipalities to be thinking about that as well, as far as how fire services will look in the future. But overall, again, our goal is to provide a sustainable and flexible fire funding model. And as you all who were at the meeting heard, we're talking about preparing for demographic changes, funding challenges that happen, and make sure we have local control over revenue streams. It's kind of been an overall theme there. So again, any board direction that you all may have on a particular option that you think is best suited to move forward to and best suited to have more conversations about.
Questions from Commissioner Helms, has a question.
Yeah, I had the opportunity to attend your meeting with the fire chiefs.
Yes, sir.
Local municipalities. I think one thing that's very evident is that there's a lack of understanding of what we're trying to do. And one gentleman said, oh, mine's going to $800 if we use the Brunswick model. That wasn't correct statement, because I think he misunderstood. One thing I don't know is what's included in your fire tax district? Is your data just off of the housing market or commercial market? Or does, like today, does it include your vehicle tax?
It does.
Because you're saying all the estimates include the vehicle tax in these various districts.
Yeah, we included the property tax, the motor vehicle tax, and the original sales tax number, which had to get adjusted. But all of that was included in the whole analysis by Stan Tech.
Well, one thing that concerns me, I've had a request in a municipal district back into the county, and I told the gentleman I couldn't support it because we've got to figure out how to do this first.
Yes, sir.
And so, you know, I know there's some areas that are limited, maybe combining to be a municipal district.
Yes, sir.
So I think we've got to do a little more soul-searching and figure out, look at the options, because they go away and they want to come back. It's hard to come back, especially when you've got a larger area.
Yes, sir.
I think also we need to look at the fire districts, because there are fire districts that have donut holes, they've got areas that don't even pay a fire tax. So I think we need to look at that, too, it's all a part of this, so we can have a good picture of what's actually going on. I think, I don't think we're ready tonight to say we're going after a particular district. I think we need to communicate with the municipalities and fire departments more depth to understand where they are and what they think they can live with.
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Rushen. Have we heard anything from the municipalities that we're looking at creating a larger fire department in Hemmy Bridge, Stallons, Indian Trail, Lake Park?
No, sir. I think, as the manager mentioned at the last meeting, I think they're some time away from really making serious moves on that. I think they're still analyzing and pondering how that would work and how that would be structured, so nobody's had any conversations with me about that, no, sir.
If they did create it, then we would just take that out of, we would erase those sales tax or those tax districts.
We would have to rearrange those tax districts, yes, sir.
Okay, and then...
Depending on how they structure themselves.
You know, the, looking at this, again, for as long as we've looked at it, there's only two simple solutions that I see. First of all, the simplest, I guess, would be to leave it like it is right now until we can figure more out about what's going on in these other districts. The second one is the county-wide tax. Yeah, I know Commissioner Helms and I disagree on some of these issues, but I'm in agreement with him that we're, you know, I'm not ready to give any direction, because it is such a confusing thing, and just still not ready to support. I'd rather leave it like it is and try to figure out more about where we're going with it than, like I said, you know, we have Weddington, I think, that's asked to come back into the county system, or we've got, you know, this thing hanging over Indian Trail and Hemmy Bridge and Stallons, Lake Park, that area.
If I might just provide some additional information to Commissioner Helms' statement is that, and I don't know that this is widely known, but as a county, we are not required to provide fire service. Now, I would never say that that is a direction you all want to go in, but it is not statutorily required, it's not statutorily required for counties to provide that service. And we do so because we want to provide the concern of the safety of our residents, but the municipality were to determine that they are no longer interested in providing, you are under no obligation to take that service back.
Well, I understand, but also know that this board has been very adamant that public safety is number one in our book, and I think therefore we have to consider every option for all our citizens. I know that one thing, and I look at these in the Brunswick model, some people are taking it literally, some variation of it that might fit and, you know, take care of. I mean, there's differences, but I think we need to talk more to individual, I think we need to go to some town meetings and explain what we're looking at so all their boards, because if some of them bow out of it, we're in trouble. So I think, I think our next move is to go talk to the municipalities on their level at their meetings and explain what we're doing and understand, let them see some of this. I know a couple of weeks ago, I asked for this information, it's the first time I've seen it. So, you know, they need to see it, too.
Well, I don't think it can be argued that we haven't made a valiant effort toward exploring the various possibilities. We've certainly taken our time in doing that. I'm reminded, and I don't want to speak out of turn for Mr. Crook, but he's reminded us several times that ultimately, it is the county's responsibility to fund the fire protection system. The firemen determine how and what equipment they need and that kind of thing, but ultimately, it's our decision to fund. I think we're getting near the point, I certainly don't want to stop discussion or if people or members of the board still have questions, but I think we're quickly approaching a point of political will from this board to determine how we're going to go about that and take that direction. So I know you've spent a lot of time on it, Michael, and I appreciate that. We've invested quite a bit of money in consultants, and we've talked a lot to volunteer firemen,
At this point, staff has done all that the board has directed, so we would need some direction of what else you may want us to do, or we can do nothing and proceed as we have proceeded in the past.
Commissioner Rushen. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I too appreciate all the work that y'all have done, and, you know, Commissioner Simpson and I, we've done a lot of work and talking and haggling over this over the last couple of years. The closest thing that we have to being, having some management over this is what we have now, other than, again, the county-wide tax. We can actually work with some of these departments and fulfill needs if the board chooses, or we can limit and cut back on things through the budget process. So again, you know, whatever we have right now is working for now. And again, maybe, maybe in next year, we'll have the answer from the municipalities that want to join together, maybe, and see where we can go from there. But again, until, until the municipalities all buy in and understand what we're doing, anything that we do, other than county-wide tax, is, can be, you know, eliminated by one municipality backing out on it. So that's what I'm concerned about, is spending a lot of political energy and capital, only to be told by one town that they don't want to do it, and then we tear communities apart, we tear fire departments apart, and at the end of the day, we don't get anything out of it.
And I will say that no town has said that they were, that I've spoken to, has said that's happening right now. I think a lot of them have chosen or thought about an option that they can live with within these parameters. I think the next step was just to refine that down, to go have those conversations. They've asked about that at their council meetings, to come talk about an option that the board wants to do. Again, we were just looking to refine that number down if the commission wants to do that.
Let me kind of ask another question for you, Mr. Chairman.
Sure.
For example, like the Monroe Airport, which we've all, as taxpayers, have invested in pieces and parts, and over the years did economic development and things like that, it's in the Monroe District or the Wesley Chapel District, or what was Monroe Airport being?
Bakers, that one.
Bakers. So all the airplanes that come into there, they're taxed or feed, or they, they're taxed or fee on airplanes and...
Yes, they, if they have airplanes, yes, we do tax them.
Yeah. And see, I look at things like that, and just like the amenities, and one area might have over another, and I just don't see the eastern side of the county ever getting some things like that, especially with the lack of utilities. And so you're almost given a hand up, the taxpayers of the Union County give a hand up to certain areas, and that's the concern that I have, too, that, you know, depending on where we put something or where we locate economic development, you know, you're going to see more industries go there, you're going to see more need go there, but at the same time, just like those airplanes, that'd be fantastic to be able to spread that, and that's kind of what we do with the system that we have now. A lot of people aren't aware, we're kind of on a county-wide system, other than the autonomy that the fire fee gives, that they are guaranteed a base amount of money to deal with. And they feel like, I think that's what we heard over and over again, is the autonomy with the fire chiefs was probably the number-one concern, and they feel like us taking that away from all of them, and I can see the concern there, but, you know, we could always set tax rates to zero, we could do, we could set the fire fees, we can do a lot of things like that, but we haven't. And I hope that the fire departments would have more faith than us as a board or any other future board, that we do not want to decimate the fire departments. And as long as we can keep volunteers, those volunteers do more, you know, they're fantastic for the county and for the tax rate, and we appreciate them, and I definitely want to encourage every, everything I can to keep volunteering. But, you know, as we grow and change, it's going, that's going to change as well. But right now, we have an ability to fund fire departments at what the manager, I guess, feels appropriate, and then through the, after the manager, through what the board feels is appropriate.
I run a thing about Monroe airports and Bakers, so there's not a fire tax on vehicles or airplanes. It's fire fee district. Most profitable fire fee district we have, I think, is what your data provides, but...
Well, and the feedback we got from the volunteer fire departments was the two primary options were the self-funding tax district, which we have five of those presently, and the rest of them are fee-based, or the self-funding plus the county subsidy, which is really what we do presently.
I think whichever we go, it needs to be equitable for the people in that particular
Chairman.
Yes.
My biggest concern about the municipalities is every two years, we have an election, which means every two years, they could reverse what they did two years before. And I don't want that where it's always, what are we doing with our fire departments? Because these three towns just pulled out, or this town pulled out. That's a big concern for me. I'm not crazy about a country, county-wide tax. I'm really worried about the implications of that.
Commissioner Rushen. Thank you, and I will talk to board about this, that's why I was saying the simplest method, if we're going to change anything, the county-wide tax was the simplest method, because nobody can back out on it. It's assessed county-wide, it's assessed through the tax rate, and we just fund what we, all fire departments, what we feel appropriate. The concern from the chiefs is that their autonomy
Right.
would be taken away there, so that's the, that's the, that's the give and take on that.
But that goes into the general fund, right?
Yeah, it all goes into the general fund to be, well, it goes into a, the amount is set aside, just like our EMS, just like our...
It is a general fund tax, it is the board accounting commissioners who would establish what those monies to be, were to be used for. However, as this board has brought up in the past, some of the concerns were that since it is general fund, that all it would take is a vote of a future county commission to use those funds for another purpose other than fire.
I mean, the point in hand is the gas tax, and this is the first year North Carolina hasn't robbed it for something else. I mean, that, that's what comes to my mind when I hear county-wide tax, that it may not be who's sitting here today, it may not be four years from now, but eventually, we're going to have somebody saying, well, we need something over here, so we'll just take it out of that, and we'll give the fire departments less money. That's what I'm worried about with county-wide.
Mr. Helms, then Commissioner Rushen.
I think, my understanding is that a fire tax or a fire fee can only be used in the district that it was collected. And I think that's what Ms. Harrison said, that you lose that requirement for those funds to be used for fire service. And actually, I was having a conversation with Mayor of Monroe, and jokingly, I asked him, I said, you know, I think the county-wide, we were going to give it back to them, but who says that the next mayor of Monroe or council is going to use that money to give back to the people instead of them paying a local county fire tax? So there's exposures with that county-wide tax. It's easy, but there's not a protection for the fire departments.
Well, the dirty secret is, is we already have a county-wide fire tax. We have, it's less, it's half a penny or a penny...
I think it's 1.03 cents.
So it changed, we already have it. Those airplanes do get taxed that little bit, but, and we get taxed on other things with, you know, and we could always not give any of that to the fire departments, that would be crazy, and I think we'd see a complete revolt from the citizens. We can always set the tax rates in the other districts to zero, so the concern, and I understand it from the county-wide taxes, it would be foolish to not provide the money for protection.
You would have thought it would be foolish not to give NC DOT the money for the roads.
Yes, I agree with that.
You know, I mean, I understand what you're saying.
But we have complete control over it right now.
Right now.
We would have it then, I mean, we'd have, we have complete control over all these things, regardless of, regardless of which it is, we got clothed in immense power, that come up, can you see that movie? So we have control over this now, and like I said, no, no board accounting commissioners I can really remember that's just completely anti-fire department. I know there's commissioners from time to time that get on and want to do something about the fire departments or one organization, the other, but it would be completely foolish to go against the safety of the citizens. But the autonomy is the concern that fire chiefs have, if they're willing to volunteer their time, if we've got volunteers in the district, you know, I'm willing to let them volunteer as long as they want to, and again, just sticking with what we got, we can still maintain and meet the budgets with what we have right now. So it appears the board direction is no direction, that was it.
Okay. So unless directed otherwise at some future point, at this point in time, we will proceed forward with the budget preparation as we have done in the past under the existing funding model that we have used. For lack of any other direction, that's what I hear the direction is.
Commissioner Helms.
I, I think it would be short-sighted to not go talk to the municipalities. We've been kicking this can down the road for four years, or more, and so... been kicking this can down the road for four years, or more. And so to stop and not do anything, I think we need to have those meetings with our municipalities and the fire boards, not just the chief, because the fire boards make, I mean, they make the decisions kind of like we do for the fire department. So I think we need to have an aggressive, it'd be great if we could solve this finally prior to our budget cycle coming up. But I'd make a motion that we continue to meet with the fire departments and present the options that we have. You know, miracle may happen. Maybe one of them suddenly comes up and hands us a solution. But I think we'd be negligent not to, not to go forth with these meetings and talk to these chiefs and, and boards of the fire departments and the municipalities.
Do you have a suggested timeline for that?
Well, I think we need to have that back by first of February. I mean, there's nothing wrong, if you're going to meet with fire departments, you can meet with multiples at one time, and if you can orchestrate that. So, but I think we've been pushing this down the road too long, and we need to keep working on it. Because if we stop, you know, we're going to start over again next year. And I don't think that's necessarily the best option.
Based upon the feedback that we've received to date, would there be any option you would want taken off the table as part of that process?
I would say the sixth district is probably not, not an option from what we heard.
I would agree to that.
Do you need a motion or consensus on that?
I would like a motion, please.
I thought that's what I gave you just now.
Okay. We have a motion to eliminate the sixth district as an option. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
None. Do we need a motion to continue our discussions with the municipalities and the fire boards?
Yes, sir, please.
Then I make a motion, we continue that discussion with a target for completion around February 1st. And, you know, I think members of this board would participate if it'd be beneficial to you. Biggest problem we have is the timing of municipal meetings. But I think we need to proceed, proceed with that.
Commissioner Rushen.
Thank you. And Michael, I'm sure you've had discussions with a lot of the municipalities. You know, this, I still see this as a, if this, if anything comes from the municipalities, it's going to be a bottom-up approach, that the fire departments and the municipalities need to get together and decide what they believe in and what they, what fits their needs, and really come at it from a, from a problem-solving standpoint, the local elected officials and the fire chiefs and the fire department boards working together. I think them telling us more about what would fit would be better than us telling them as much. So, you know, what, if it, again, if these fire departments are looking at joining with the municipalities and joining together to create bigger fire departments and provide funding for that, that's fantastic. It takes it off our plate. But if, but until they understand the urgency, sometimes everybody doesn't understand the urgencies of what we're talking about doing. And, and this, you know, that's going to have to be done. They're going to have, they're going to have to come together and decide what's good for their communities, and then we've got to get 14 of them to agree with us. And it's tough. It's, I liken it to herding cats before.
They've been, they've been pretty open so far. They really have been. So I think they'll be good to keep working with.
Okay, we have a motion, discussion, further discussion. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none.
Okay, thank you.
Seacrest Shortcut Small Area Plan.
I was going to ask if it was Mr. Matthews and Mr. Hanson, but my question has just been answered.
Thank you, Commissioners, Ms. Coto. I will not use all of the slides that are in here unless you have questions about any of the information. This is the conclusion of a 10-month process that Union County and Indian Trail collectively, collaboratively went through. My counterpart, KDC, from Town of Indian Trail is here. We've had representation at each of our planning board and governing board meetings to go through this adoption process to help answer any questions. So far, it's been unanimously recommended by both planning boards and the governing board from Indian Trail. The background that we went through and motivation was that the Monroe Expressway is going to open at the end of this year. This is one of the most attractive interchanges for development because it's closest to Mecklenburg and has a lot of developable land. We were seeing a lot of development pressures, both within the town and the county, and we saw the need to have a coherent strategy to address this growth pressure because maybe it all wants to go residential, maybe it wants to go commercial, maybe it wants to go employment. But if we deal with all of our rezonings piecemeal without a bigger vision to work towards, we probably weren't going to achieve what we were looking for. So we went through a very collaborative process with the help of consultants from Gresham Smith and Partners and Central Indiana Council of Governments, had a very engaged steering committee as well as the public, and came up with a recommendation that was roundly supported. In fact, we even received an unsolicited letter of support for the plan recommendations from the Bonterra Homeowner Association, who's, had a representative from their board, their HOA board, on our steering committee, and was very complimentary about our process. So our study area is essentially the land that's not developed around the interchange as well as along Seacrest-Shortcut Road. It's largely undeveloped, which was by design. There wasn't much need to look at the developed areas. And instead, we focused on the interchange and actually two interchanges because of the southern part, Rocky River Road is the next interchange within the city of Monroe. It's quite complicated. Hemby Bridge, actually at the northern end, just had their smaller plan completed in coordination with Union County. So we reflected their recommendations as it affected their geography. Indian Trail has a little bit more land than we do. The remainder is unincorporated. We did not include any of the city of Monroe, but we did share the recommendations with them, and they were fine with the recommendations. Transportation plans in the area, there are no funded projects except an interchange, or I'm sorry, roundabout at this intersection. Otherwise, you just have the Monroe Expressway and the road improvements being made to the area. You have multi-lane recommendations for Seacrest-Shortcut as well as Unionville Indian Trail Road. Neither of these are funded, but they do help give us guidance as it relates to rezonings, when we typically request additional right-of-way as a part of the land development process through those rezonings. The existing zoning in the area is overwhelmingly large lot residential. That's why we expect rezonings to guide a lot of the development through this process. The existing one-acre lots are, that would be allowed through by right zoning are not, not reasonable in light of the land development, or I'm sorry, the land values due to the proximity to Charlotte as well as the interchanges along the expressway. So we're seeing a lot of redevelopment and rezoning requests. In terms of environmental features, this is something that's been of visibility recently, brought up by one of the planning board members from Indian Trail, and that's regarding flooding the area. Hurricane last month, we did have some of the roads in the area that were flooded and closed for periods. We included in the environmental features, we didn't just include the normal streams and floodways, but also the hydroic soils. That was brought up by our stormwater engineer within the county as a way to identify which are the best lands to preserve when development is proposed, so that we could cluster the density and save these areas for natural features. Because if it's undisturbed, your, your forest and other, other natural lands are much better at water infiltration. So you reduce the stormwater potential. So that was something that we included as a recommendation within the site plan review process when we do get rezonings. In terms of open house and outreach summaries, we did a really good job at getting the word out to non-traditional populations. We had over 170 participants in person at our two open houses, a lot of feedback in terms of wanting a sense of place as well as preserving some of the natural areas. So we had both ends of the spectrum. They wanted places to go to with a sense of energy, but they also wanted natural and environmental features protected. In terms of the demographics, we also did a really good job of getting online outreach and had over 300 people respond, and then a lot of newcomers. It wasn't just people who have lived in the area for a long time and wanted to be left alone. It was a lot of new people who have lived in the area for just a handful of years, as well as younger people who traditionally don't participate in processes like these. So we were, we were pleased with the results. Terms of issues and opportunities, the fact that it is complicated. You have multiple jurisdictions in the area. You do have some chopped up pieces of land do the expressway, especially along Seacrest-Shortcut, land that used to be large tracks now are split on either side. So that changes the dynamic of what is appropriate for use with that land. You have noise due to the expressway as well as changing travel patterns due to people moving, driving through those interchanges, and also increased expectations of pedestrian and bicycle opportunities in the area that we want to try and accommodate through subsequent development. And also in terms of housing options, there was a lot of talk about a mix of housing types, empty nesters, we'd see a lot of talk of age-restricted communities, apartments, proximity to the interchange. You need that type of density of residences in order to create that activity for, for these destinations that they did want in this area. They didn't want to see more homes. They said, well, the homes are here. We really want some shopping, some restaurants, some places to go to. Also economic development, the fact that great proximity to Charlotte by, by the virtue of the Monroe Expressway, can we get some businesses in this area as well, some employment opportunities? So we had three scenarios based off of our research and input from our initial meetings. And we coded them as employment, which means a lot more purple. You have mixed use, which is just focused on the interchange, and then low density, a lot more one-acre lots kept in the recommended land use for rezoning purposes. What came back from this was honestly a recommendation for the mixed-use scenario. What was, what's important to note is that the recommendations from this plan are really not an increase of development intensity or overall scale of development from the existing land use plans. The zoning is fairly low. It'd be about 1,500 dwelling units if everything were developed, and about a quarter million square feet of non-residential. The existing land use plans are roughly double that for housing and about four times that for non-residential. But under the different scenarios, it's really no more than what's allowed under the existing land use plan. So what we're really doing is refining what's more appropriate for the different areas in terms of high, medium, or low density, as well as increasing the amount of non-residential, particularly near the interchange. So based on the feedback from the meetings, from online feedback, from issuing public press releases, this overall mix of land uses is approximately, it's within a few percent of what was ultimately recommended in the existing land use plans for Indian Trail and Union County. And the amount of non-residential goes up by about 100%. And that's mainly due to a lot of employment, meaning not necessarily like heavy industrial, but maybe some service industries, maybe some plumbing or medical, perhaps some service, service light office that could go in this area because they could tolerate the high volume and noise along the expressway, and then a range of uses radiating away from the interchanges. The areas that are in green, shown as open space and environmentally sensitive, obviously, they still have the ability to develop, but because they're primarily in the flood plains, we would not recommend that the development intensity be increased in those areas. So we have the planning implementation strategies as it relates to housing options as well as commercial retail opportunities, employment in the area, meaning that particularly that purple area, the employment be really retained, and we resist retail or residential rezoning requests along that corridor. And then also natural environmental protection through low-impact development, a lot of regulations that would be just part of the development process for those site plans that we could include as a part of conditions for the rezoning. And then transportation improvements such as requiring sidewalks on the frontage of the properties, connections between the developments. And so these recommendations made it through the planning boards unanimously, made it through the governing board for Indian Trail. They're here before you tonight. Happy to answer any questions that you may have. I know it was a lot of information. I'm happy to go back to any of the previous slides to drill into some of the information that was provided. But otherwise, if there aren't any questions, the request before you is to approve the small area plan for this area.
Move that we approve the small area plan for the Seacrest-Shortcut area. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Unopposed.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Go on. Sorry. Mr. Cooksey.
Uh, now...
Sorry to keep you waiting.
Now batting cleanup. No, sir.
He actually requested this time slot. I don't think he knew it was going to be this late, however.
This is my second gig tonight. I started the evening in Huntersville, so it worked out. Chairman, members of the board, Ms. Coto, members of staff, pleasure to be with you today. Bringing you greetings on behalf of the North Carolina Turnpike Authority, a business unit of the Department of Transportation that you may not have heard of much, but you'll be hearing, obviously, much, much more about as we look forward to opening our second toll facility in the state of North Carolina here in Union County. Just to give you a sense of how far we've come in about three and a half years, I pulled this image from Google Earth, went back in time to June of 2015 to kind of look at central Union County there with Monroe to the south, to the bottom of the screen, and look at all that land to the, to the top. Advance it by March of 2018, and you can see how the landscape has been changed by the construction of the Monroe Expressway. We've, we've all seen it at ground level. I think there's something impressive to be seen from, from the top. But with this facility about to open, it's time for the Turnpike Authority to do its tolling 101 lessons. We learned a number of lessons from opening the Triangle Expressway in late 2011 about how to get the information out to the general public about the coming of the road, how transponders work, how building an account works. But we also learned that we didn't do a good enough job in two ways. We didn't talk enough about the bill-by-mail option that exists for folks who don't have a transponder, and we didn't do a good enough job then about making sure our local elected official partners and local governments are well-informed about how this tolling process works. It's very possible that after traveling on the expressway, some of your constituents may come to you before they come to us about their experience. And we want to make sure that you've got a bit of a background, so that you're not caught unawares by a particular detail, well, particular detail. So to begin, I would like to note, in Huntersville, I pointed out the Monroe Expressway is coming, and here in Union County, we all know it's coming. I'd also point out that the other facility that is opening up by the end of the year that has tolls is I-77. This is not a presentation about the differences between the two, although there are many, and I could give you that presentation. But I'm not. I'm here instead to talk about the main thing that's similar about both projects, and that is the North Carolina Turnpike Authority is the toll collection agency, and our NC Quick Pass program is the main way we do that. I always like to point out to folks that we do not do toll booths in North Carolina. The number one thing that sets us apart from other people's experience of toll travel is from the very beginning, we knew that there was no point in stopping you on your way. We're building highways here. We're looking for you to be able to get to where you need to go safely and conveniently, and stopping along the way doesn't help. So instead of toll booths, we have these gantries, like the one you see in the center photo, which is a gantry on the Triangle Expressway with a car going under it, to give you an example of how you travel, will be traveling on the Monroe example of how you travel, will be traveling on the Monroe Expressway without stopping. The photos on either side show the abundance of electronic equipment that make open road tolling or all-electronic tolling possible. So, if you're not going to pay us as you travel, that leaves two other options. One is paying us ahead of time. That's where the transponder account comes into play. For an initial deposit, you can get an account started with the Turnpike Authority, and every time you travel on our facility, we'll deduct the toll from that account and then give you notification that it's time to top that account off again after it's been depleted. I'll talk more about the transponders that are used for that account in a moment, but secondly, the other way to pay would be afterward, the post-paid account process, and that's the bill-by-mail. That's taking a photo of the license plate of the car traveling under the gantry, finding the registered owner of that plate, and sending that address a bill. In addition, after we've sent that bill, anyone who receives a bill-by-mail has the option of opting into a bill-by-email process. In addition to the time change, paying us ahead of time or paying us afterward, a key thing to note about the difference between the two is that our Quick Pass transponder account tolls are 35% less than the bill-by-mail tolls. State law gives the Turnpike Authority the ability to offer a discount for prepaid tolls. We do that, and that discount is about 35%. We have three basic transponders that can meet most everybody's needs. We have some specialized ones as well, but these are the three that basically cover it. The first is our standard NC Quick Pass. This is what the sticker looks like live and in person, with my hand as a comparison. It is, as I mentioned, a sticker. It goes on the windshield, right behind the rearview mirror. You can place it so you never see it. We will give you an NC Quick Pass standard sticker with the opening of an account, so there's no charge for that little transponder. Think of it as your local option. It works for paying tolls in North Carolina, with Peach Pass facilities in Georgia and Sun Pass facilities in Florida. And likewise, anyone with a Peach Pass or a Sun Pass can travel on North Carolina toll facilities at the lower rate as well. For folks who travel a bit more, there's another option available that does have a cost to it, $7.40 plus tax, one-time, covers the NC Quick Pass Easy Pass, the hard case, with extra technology in it that allows it to be used not only in Florida, Georgia, and North Carolina, but also all the states in the Easy Pass Consortium. So, for your eastern seaboard travel, this $7.40 one-time plus tax, one-time cost option would allow you to have tolls deducted from your account all up and down east of the Mississippi, wherever you see Easy Pass, Quick Pass, Peach Pass, or Sun Pass. Special for I-77, we, and I don't have an example of this one to show you live and in person unfortunately, is a special switchable transponder. I don't, again, this isn't about the differences between the two projects, but I do need to mention that one of the things that sets the 77 project apart with its toll lanes right next to free lanes is that high occupancy vehicles can travel toll-free if they identify themselves that way, with having three or more occupants in the vehicle. The easiest way for a car to do that, for a driver to do that, is with this switchable transponder we have called, notice how the names keep getting longer, the NC Quick Pass Easy Pass Flex. There's a switch on it. If you've got three or more in the car, you can travel toll-free in the I-77 lanes, in addition to using it to pay tolls in standard facilities, plus Easy Pass, Peach Pass, Quick Pass, Sun Pass facilities. But again, that's generally a more popular topic of conversation in the Lake Norman Corridor. For those who don't go with the transponder account, I've mentioned bill-by-mail, and we'll talk a bit about that in detail now. I put the envelope up here because we've gone through several designs on the envelope to make sure people understand it's coming from us and that there is a bill in there and that it needs to be handled promptly. Billing works just like standard billing. Arrives in the US, through the US Postal Service. The person who gets the bill opens it, reviews it. In the upper right, there's the amount due, when it's due. In the middle there, you see a photo of the license plate that we use, so the person receiving the bill can make sure it is the correct license plate. We don't want errors in that respect. And then, under it, are a list of all the tolls, transactions incurred by that plate through our camera bill-by-mail process. We aim to be a very customer-friendly organization, so there are multiple ways to pay this bill. One is through going online to our NCQuickPass.com website. We take payment through credit cards there. Alternatively, if you'd like to talk to somebody but not go anywhere, we do have a phone number, a toll-free line, 877-MYPASS, to talk to a customer service rep, pay the bill that way. A good old-fashioned stamp on an envelope with a check can be dropped to a post office box and pay the bill that way. And then finally, and more on this in a few slides, we do have in-person customer service centers where you can work with a person live and in person regarding the Quick Pass bill, or the, excuse me, the bill-by-mail invoice. Payment is due within 30 days of when the bill is sent, and that information is on the bill as well, when that is due. As I mentioned, for those who go online, we, last year, we unveiled a bill-by-email option, so folks will have the opportunity to see if they go online and input their invoice number, that they could get future invoices by email if they preferred, rather than the paper bill. It doesn't result in any lower toll. It's still the bill-by-email route, but as of about a year or so into it, several thousand of our regular customers who don't want transponders have signed up for our bill-by-email program. Well, that, the bill-by-email process raises that question, the uncomfortable question, what if I don't pay? And I have to stress, this is kind of the meat of the presentation, that the Turnpike Authority is guided by state statute as to what we do in this case. It's not a decision of our Board, it's not a decision of staff. We are guided by the directives of state laws. What makes it easiest is that the first invoice is just the toll amount. The tolls incurred by travel at the bill-by-mail rate are included on the first bill, if that's paid, end of story. If however, we have to send out a second invoice, we're authorized not only to include the unpaid balance and any other tolls incurred, but a $6 processing fee established by law. We hope that one gets paid, but if it isn't, the third invoice not only includes the unpaid balance, a $6 processing fee, but now by law, we add a $25 civil penalty. So, now we're up to $37 in the aggregate in fees and penalties for not paying a toll invoice, plus any new tolls incurred. To the extent that there's some good news in this process, that civil penalty occurs only once in this particular line of processing, but then again, if the fourth invoice arrives and it doesn't get paid by this point, we are authorized to place a registration hold on the license plate. So, going to DMV would result in not being able to renew the plate until the toll bill is paid. We are one of several agencies that has this element with DMV, people who don't pay child support. There's a raft of things that if people don't do them, it blocks the registration plate of their license plate, so the Turnpike Authority is on that list. We can also send a bill by this point to collections, and nobody likes dealing with collection agencies. Turning to the Monroe Expressway itself, so that's the transponder process, the bill-by-mail process. We're showing this map a good bit. The toll portion is about 18 miles long. We're opening it to traffic, we're saying late fall, between, say, Thanksgiving and Christmas. I'm not allowed to give it a specific date yet, because who knows what could happen between now and then, but we're very comfortable that for the full length, since it's 18 miles, four-lane, median divided, no traffic signals, no stop signs, just interchanges, one wherever you see a green dot, 65 miles an hour can get you from one end to another pretty quickly. We're very confident in saving, saying it'll save you at least 15 minutes, probably more in travel time, and avoiding more than 25 traffic signals from east to west in that 18-mile length. Question of how much was settled by our Board when it adopted a toll rate schedule earlier this year. Works out to about 14 cents a mile as the lowest rate possible, and realizing I'm kind of in a sales and marketing gig, I'm going to give you the lowest rate to start with. Two-axle vehicle with a transponder, 14 cents a mile, $2.54 for a complete trip end-to-end on the upcoming Monroe Expressway. It's another opportunity to note, however, that those transponder rates are 35% less than bill-by-mail, so I leave it to you to work out the math on what the bill-by-mail rate is for a complete trip. Hint, it's knocking on the door of $4. We do have different toll rates for different kinds of vehicles, though. The statute lets us class five vehicles. Class one is a two-axle vehicle, by far the majority of what we expect to see on the expressway, and that's the standard rate. For class-two vehicles with three axles, and that includes a two-axle vehicle pulling a trailer with one axle, so that's a three-axle vehicle, then the rate is twice the two-axle rate, and that's twice the transponder rate, twice the bill-by-mail rate, whichever is applicable. For a four-axle vehicle, or a vehicle with four or more axles, that's class three, and that toll rate is four times the class-one rate, so four times the transponder rate or four times the bill-by-mail rate. The rates will be shown on signage that looks a lot like this on the Monroe Expressway, showing you the Quick Pass rate and the bill-by-mail rate to the next exit, and the Quick Pass rate and the bill-by-mail rate to the end of the Monroe Expressway, for folks who are doing that calculation, along with a reminder of the multipliers for three-axle and vehicles with four or more axles. We have a full chart available. This one is showing the transponder rates for a two-axle vehicle, keeping on that theme of showing you the lowest rate, that shows you point-to-point what it would cost to get from one exit to another, depending on what your travel needs are on the Monroe Expressway. Earlier this year, our team was at the welcoming back to students at Wingate University, and there was a lot of interest by faculty and staff and students of, okay, what's it going to cost me to use the Monroe Expressway to get to work? And they always say, "Well, Austin Chaney Road is exit 270. If you're starting all the way from, say, Matthews or somewhere, that would be $2.12 each direction for a two-axle car with a transponder." Lot of interest there. Our customer service, I mentioned, we do have the phone number, toll-free during standard business hours Monday through Friday, plus Saturday, 9 to 2. Our website's available 24/7, NCQuickPass.com. You can open an account, manage your account, pay a bill-by-mail there, do a lot of the work of the account just regularly online. And for those who want that personal touch, though, we do have three customer service centers. By law, they are built near a toll facility, but they are not facility-specific. You can do any Turnpike Authority business at any one of the three. In Monroe, we opened it earlier this month at 3034 Winston Avenue. That's the Navant Health Medical Plaza across from Target. In Charlotte, the customer service center is at the interchange of Harris Boulevard and 45, and then in Morrisville, near Raleigh, we have our facility that is near to the Triangle Expressway. But again, we've actually had people show up before we opened the Charlotte facility with their Triangle Expressway bill, saying, "Hey, can I pay this here?" Well, now they can. Again, hours of operations, standard 9 to 5, Monday through Friday, plus Saturday hours 9 to 2. Want to close with some statistics about the business we already run before opening the Monroe Expressway, before the I-77 express lanes opened, to give you a sense of what we've built up in about seven years of operation of the Triangle Expressway. We have more than 190,000 accounts established as of the end of September 2018. We have issued more than 420,000 transponders of all different types, and in the third quarter of 2018, we processed about 4.5 million transactions per month, defining a transaction as any time a vehicle goes under a gantry. This is a pretty sizable business, we think, but we are looking forward to seeing these numbers increase with the opening, again, of the Monroe Expressway and the I-77 express lanes. Mr. Chairman, if there are any questions, I'd be happy to take them.
Mr. Rushing?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Our emergency vehicles, are they going to be charged to take the expressway?
No. Emergency vehicles, if they, will be issued a special emergency responder, transponder. We have a, I have a team member who's reaching out. We had a, actually, we had an outreach session with emergency responders throughout the county a few weeks ago at the State Highway Patrol Office in Monroe, and we'll be issuing these special red transponders to every vehicle for police, fire, and ambulance.
Thank you.
Did you have some questions?
It's always a delight when I get to report back to the folks who put this presentation together for me, that there were no, you know, there weren't any questions from it. We must have covered it. Thank you.
They did a great job, and you did as well.
Well, thank you, sir.
We appreciate your patience.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, Warren.
Oh, I also, I brought every member of the Board a notepad and a pen because we've got swag. I'll hand them over to Michelle to share with you, because there's this thing here. Got to get that NC Quick Pass name out there.
Thank you very much.
Much appreciated.
Texas County Manager's comments.
I just have one brief comment. We received some good news today. Human Resources attended a national Neo-Gub conference last week, and we received an award for best management practices.
Excellent. Mr. Hems?
No comment.
Mr. Rushing?
No comment.
Mr. Harrison?
No comments.
Mr. Aikness?
No comments.
I only have one, and that's motion to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.